You ready? No. No, no, seriously, no. Taylan shows pride in herself in her school by always seeking ways that she can learn more, improve, and to help others. She comes every day with a big smile on her face, a huge hug for myself and her teacher, Mrs. Moore, and she's excited to learn something new each and every day. Taylan always seems to be the happiest when given the opportunity to help her classmates and her teacher, and is often seeking new opportunities to be helpful. Just for example, real quick, last week or the week before, I can't remember, Mrs. Moore was doing an example in her classroom of a word problem, and she said, "I wonder how many cupcakes it would take that we would have to sell to buy us a new whiteboard for our classroom." Well, they worked it out, well, that Tuesday came and I was doing my morning rounds and Ms. Moore was in tears, and she has an envelope of money. And she said, Taylan went home and told her mama that we have to get Mrs. Moore a new whiteboard. So they sold cupcakes all weekend, and she raised $450.
Oh, wow. $455, because they brought in $50 more.
Okay, so $455, that's incorrect. Wow. So this is the type of person that Ms. Taylan is. She's amazing, she's a go-getter. Taylan, we are super proud of you, and we're lucky to have you on our Patriot team, and job well done, and never lose the kindness that you have in your heart. Okay? Congratulations.
You gotta come up here for a second. Mom gets come too, because she...
Come on, Mom.
She made come on.
So thank you, Mom and Dad as well.
264 cupcakes.
And they are very good. Very good cupcakes.
One, two, three. There's one.
All right.
Nope, you get to go up to them.
I'm gonna get to the ballgame.
Oh, why's he wanting to?
You betcha.
Thank you. It was all her idea though.
Go over here, everybody. Everybody smile big. One, two, three. There we go.
Thank you.
Great job.
Excellent. Yeah. Okay, do more recognition.
Well, yeah, we do, we have boys basketball.
Okay.
Thanks for having me in. Boys basketball team has played very well this year, and they're 13 and 14 and 1 now. And obviously, winning creates a lot of attention towards the team, no matter how they act or, you know, no matter what else they're doing. But just some of the positives that are surrounding the team this year are, other than winning, is the sportsmanship award at the Holiday Tournament, which is a great honor and certainly kind of reflects the nature of the boys on the team, we've kind of grown used to. I heard from a, I heard from a community member that they were at a junior high boys basketball game last week, Coach Fields took them over there after practice, and, you know, they were just killing it in the stands, did a great job rooting the guys on, and actually the performance was thought to be elevated because of their presence.
So Coach Fields took the high school team, the varsity team, over to a junior high game and had them cheer on the junior high guys?
So that's a, you know, really good show of support, can help grow the program, and never know what one kid, it really motivated to want to be one of those guys someday. So that was a, that's a great deal. They lost one game this year, it's Mount Vernon, and that was at the Dome in Webb City, it was a kind of a high-profile game and a big game, and so that was the game that a referee had filed a special, special report to Mischa about the team in a positive light, just one of the crew mentioned how nice it were to work for, and, you know, in the midst of a really heated battle, how they conducted themselves, and said that they, you know, always enjoy doing East Newton games, and that's one of the reasons, kind of the type of kid that we have over here. And so anyway, that was, that was really nice to hear. I called the Nevada Athletic Director to talk about some junior high basketball stuff for tonight, and before I could start, I called him on Tuesday morning, and he spent the next 15 minutes, just kind of stopped me, we didn't talk about anything except he spoke about the team and how much fun he's had watching them the last two years, how impressed he is with Coach Fields and with the individuals on the team, and was very complimentary of them, and I saw him have to say some really nice words to some of our players after the game, after last Friday night, which was, which was a great win, even better than what the finals were reflected. And then, just kind of, kind of type of, not connections, but just the type of guy that Coach Fields has been in the coaching profession the last, oh, well, you know, 10, 10 years now, 10 or 11 years since he's been in school coaching. After the diamond game, referee called him up and asked him who the fundraiser was for at halftime, and it was a quilt sales for Sabrina Barrett, and he just said, "Hey, you know, we, like the Tracy Crick Foundation, who was a coach that died of cancer, and so a foundation was created by Umps, refs, coaches, they had some extra money left over at the end of last year," and he asked if, he just said, "Well, we want to donate that." Coach even said, "You know, well, that's not, not really in coaching." He's like, "You know what, that's what we want to do, we want to do that for East Newton." So anyway, he had, he's had that impact in the area, he's had that impact on kids, on the team, and just on others. So anyway, a lot of good stuff, and none of that has to do with winning, and so it's nice to hear.
Very nice.
Great. Thank you. We need to hear more positive stuff like that. Okay, next, we need to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, moved in seconds. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed? I mean, 7-0. Wow. Any public comment? Okay, we need to approve the consent agenda. Okay, it is moved to approve the consent agendas, here's seconds. Seconded, any discussion? Discussion.
The only thing I had is, which bus did we pay off, or, I mean, is that paying it off? The UMD Bank Series and NE 17, Series 2015 lease, assuming we paid it off 70,000?
That would be three buses, yes, that's, that's the last payment for those three buses.
Okay, all three of them. Okay, and what punishment, who's getting punished for the manual pencil sharpener? From making kids be a punishment? I'm just kidding, but, there's manual, manual pencil sharpeners for Granby, and I thought, you know, that'd be great punishment for them.
Retro's in.
Retro.
I will tell you this, that almost every teacher I talk to prefer the manual ones to the electric ones, because they actually sharpen the pencils better than the electric ones do.
It was just funny, I was just like, huh, who wants to be four turning?
All right, in front of discussion, seen none, we shall receive the vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed? Thank you, 7-0. Okay, it is time for some program evaluations. How about you, guidance?
Mr. John is here representing the Guidance Department, I kind of, he came and asked me about, right before school started, about leading the guidance program, and it makes a lot of sense, because he does all the testing and has a guidance background, and he can kind of coordinate all our guidance counselors together, so he came and asked about it, and I gave him a new role, so he is now our Coordinator of Guidance.
Congratulations.
Or condolences, I'm not sure which.
We'll see. So we've got the evaluation in front of you, just don't know if there's any questions or...
I have one. Who is on that committee? Who's on the guidance committee, because it's not listed on here and I just didn't...
It's like all the school coun, all the counselors.
Okay, anybody else, or is that it?
That's it.
Hold on, I had one question, and I can't find it, but you said there's one counselor per every 400 and...
That's district average, yeah.
District average? Is there like, a goal, or a, a want-to?
A recommend, yeah, there's a recommended and there's a desirable. Right now, the recommended's still an M-5, and that recommended's 1 to 500. So I broke it down with the, each of the campuses, and, I'm finding the right piece paper. I think, okay, the high school's like 1 counselor to 359, Granby's 1 to 528, and Triway's 1 to 375. And I took out all the kids who are virtual, because, you know, we want to count those in our counts, that are in the seat where they would be serving. When next fall rolls around, it's going to be M-6 standard, and those actually reduce it significantly, to where it's going to be 1 counselor, the minimum's 1 counselor every 250 students is the rec, is, is the minimum, and recommended's 1 to every 200. That's so it can better serve the kids for all their socio-emotional needs, guidance lessons, that type of thing, keep, help reduce, you know, discipline, increase attendance, that type of thing.
Well, we reduced a position this year, correct? What have you seen with that?
It's been strain, because he served the high school and half the high school, half of Granby. At Granby, it's been a reduction in being able to get class visits in, because it's one person doing every class, you know, K through 8, you know, trying to make sure we hit every student, and then at the high school, it's taken the strain to put it all on 1 counselor of like, making sure paperwork is done right, and make sure they get all students' schedule changed, make sure the transcripts look right, make sure they've got all the credits they need to graduate, so we don't get to the end of the year and be like, "Well, you're missing a half a credit of an elective." Well, I mean, that can get missed, in the hubbub of all the stress and all the pressure that's put on her to handle everything over there. So it's been an increase, and stress over there, and then the lack of student attention. Can you talk about heating equipment? What are you talking about? Any concerns? No, not really, I mean, it's kind of, it's ongoing, so if you change like, using computers or that type of thing, but, you know, it's pretty well serviced over here.
Anybody else?
What is the likelihood of us hiring 2 more counselors or...
2 more?
At some point in time, we're gonna have to because of the need.
That's our highest priority of adding acquisition, would be adding that counselor back. Hiring 2 more, you gotta remember, counselors make, on average, they probably make mid 40s, and then you add retirement and everything else on there, so it's going to be $55,000 to about, I mean, yeah, it's an estimate, about $55,000 to employ a counselor, so that'd be $55,000 more, 2 of them would be $110,000 back in, which, I mean, it's a high priority to get at least 1. I mean, it, it comes back to our financial ability, which is really what comes into that factor. And he's 100% right, we need more counselors. Don't disagree with that at all.
Agreed, just don't know what we can do about it right now.
Right.
Agreed.
Right.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I believe our next one would be food service.
Hello, everyone.
Lori, before we get started, let me tell you that I'm not going to say anything at all, you know what I'm, you know my thoughts.
What?
It's all done.
This is not the same. All right, you got that food service evaluation, and do you have any questions on that?
Why did our food costs go up so much?
I believe that is an error, because I'm going to give you some original facts that are not in that, that, that report is generated by the DESI numbers that are claimed in DESI. Well, at COVID, we started doing...
Beginning of March, middle of March, yeah.
We started doing the summer feeding programs through the Department of Health and Senior Services, and we did breakfast, lunch, and supper through them. Still can, currently continuing to do that, and so none of those meals were added into, on that Part 3, Line 8, with the, where it says 97,725. What we claimed for on those meals was 163,602. So when you add that participation in there, that's going to drop that plate cost considerably, and this is just wrong information, is what it is.
And that, that's part of the thing, DESI pulls their numbers, and they don't pull all the nu, the correct numbers, so they don't get any of the, they ju, they don't get any of the federal numbers, and then when I try and punch them in, they, you can't put them in, I can't put the federal numbers into the DESI numbers, because it kicks it back and says, "We didn't serve that meal." According to their records, we didn't serve that meal. Well, you're right, we served more, so that's, that's the issue.
That was that. Anything else on that one? The, the board letter that I gave you explained some things that I wanted to let you know about, that OPA's done to help us become more financially stable, and so one of the big ones there is no bill backs. So we had Christina, you, the district head, Christina Peters, that retired from Granby, and that position was replaced by OPA, and OPA chose not to charge you the labor on that one. So that, that's, that's been a big help for us, our ending projection from, OPA's projection is to be 75,000, almost 76,000 to the good at the end of the school year. Dr. Mitchell projects that will be more, and which, not having that labor on that, from that 1 employee, will, will also make a difference on that. So I just am tickled to death with it, guys, I mean, our supper program, we feed more supper than we do lunch, every kid getting that in the classroom, and that has, that is what has made this difference, is the participation in that, and, and those dollars that we get back from, you know, the, the increase, it pays back more for those meals, the summer food program does, is free through the end of the school year, and so, you know, my wish is that they extend it forever, you know?
One of the things you'll see is our, our monthly bill from OPA has gone up, but that's because participation is way up, so that's why the monthly bill's gone up, and then our reimbursement has gone up by each month, right, right now, it's been about $20,000 more reimbursement than we're actu, I mean, up to the, to the black, to the good side, so.
What is the supper, how are you, how are you doing that?
So that, yeah, I, we have a person at each campus that just takes care of that at the elementary's K, that's what they do all day long, it takes 1 person all day to create these, we have coolers that have each classroom's name on it, and those packages, they get a reimbursable meal put in a brown paper sack, and then they get a la carte items, or additional items added to the tote, and that goes to the classroom, the teacher marks the names of who takes it, they only need to take the brown paper sack, and then it's, we're covered with our, you know, reimbursement, and they may take all the rest if they would like to. We also, OPA offers them a milk and a water if they would like. A lot of the students I've been seeing in the lunch lines have, at lunch have been getting, the teachers have been having them get water as well, and their milk, that's for later in the day, so that they can, some of them don't have water bottles, it's less of a hazard to, you know, than going and hitting the igloos that those principals and everybody has set up in there, because it's just, you know, for themselves, and they, they're the only ones that have handled it, so that's been a good thing. And then so, at the end of the day, they're able to get on those supper snacks, the, the distribution at Triway is the study hall kids grab it, take it to the classrooms, at Granby, the junior high, they do, we've been able to purchase 3 refrigerators at each site, and that's centrally located, so that the teachers can access those down their hallways, they get their bag with their name on it, any leftovers go right back into the cooler, the list, the roster that we have to have for audits goes also in there, it's all compiled the next day, the numbers are put into the system, and it's a pretty slick process, but...
Is the high school, or do they still come like, to buy the cafeteria and pick it up? And how's that participation?
Yep, they come in. We generally do about 55 a day up here, depends on, you know, we might do 75 if it's football season, it just depends on how much teams are there. The activity at the high school is still the open library that any child can access, so that's how we get to feed anybody that comes up there, we do, we, we are still feeding some of the elementary kids at the high school when they get off the transfer buses or whatnot, or they come for, you know, junior high cheerleading practice or whatnot. So those, those kids are, can access it till 4:15 in the high school, and that's when the last bus arrives with some possible students that might want it. What else? Oh, I got a call like 2 hours ago from Mrs. Mar, who is the auditor for the Department of Health and Senior Services, they audited our supper program, from November, information is what I had to send them, and she said there was no findings, so we're done with that one.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all right.
That's, that's a good one. Any other questions? If you can't think of it now, call me, email me, I got my number.
Okay, Lori, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I believe Shelley's up.
Do you guys have my report? Do you have any questions about special education? And this is the K-12 program.
Not really? I didn't...
All right, so I have, I have 1, okay. On here, we had, in this, I don't know, 18.8% enrollment, and the target was 24.4 on the graduation, or attending college, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so are, are we going to try and lower that, or are you going to keep it the same? I mean, we're kind of in a technical trade area.
Yeah, right, so they look at, last year, we went through M-6, and so, I mean, everything from finances to paperwork, to disproportionality, everything was looked at, and the transition piece is what you're talking about, the kids are 16 and up. I brought you, just so in case someone was interested, the targets that our state performance plan actually wants, and this takes it all the way back to 2011, to last year, which of course, what we're getting now is last year's data, and they tell us exactly how much, how many kids they want to be in higher education, how many kids they want to be employed. Well, our higher education, we had like 18%, I believe.
Yeah, 18.8.
Yeah, and they wanted a little bit more, but since we had so many that went into the work field, we have lots of kids that go out to Crowder, to C-Tech, and, I mean, it's, I think it's an amazing program, and so a lot of our kids leave that and they go to work. So our numbers for the work, going into the work employment area, actually levels out a little bit, so we met in transitions, but we didn't meet in how many special education kids went to Crowder, or went to Southern.
That's not our number, that 24% is not our number, that's DESI's number.
But Tracy, also from the higher end, I think that also does count, if they did happen to go to a trade school, it does count that number as well.
Okay, it does count, these are ones that go strictly from...
Right, this is...
Yeah, the 24% is not our number, that's the goal that's set for us.
This is what the state tells us that we have to have in all schools.
And any kind of trade school, anything goes into that, so anything that's higher education after high school.
If they went to welding in Nevada, that counts as higher ed.
But now, don't they, don't they have to be a completer?
But it doesn't count to the C-Tech that are going to school during...
Don't we have to be a completer to get it to count?
Right, so we have some little kids that go out to Crowder, but then they go to welding.
As long as they're, this data, as long as they're enrolled in, they don't have to complete it.
It doesn't count for...
The CTE, the CTE is, they, they do the completer part.
I'm okay with the numbers, because overall, we have friends out there.
Right, and I, you know, it, I thought, well, okay, we all know that, you know, this is more of a technical trade area, so who kind of set those numbers, but... You answered that, that DESI set those numbers, so...
Yeah, this, this is DESI's chart right here, and this 19 and 20 is exactly what the percent they tell us that they want, which some of it's ridiculous, but we've, we've met on many things, one thing we didn't meet on was, which you didn't even ask about it, but we had 2 kids that it took 5 years to get there, which 1 moved in without the, enough credits, another was medical. I don't worry about that too, because eventually they're going to graduate, it just took them a little bit longer. So DESI's setting these numbers...
I'm just probably graduating.
I am happy they graduated too, that is why.
Yeah, I mean, it took them 5, 6, 7 years.
There's a disconnect between what, I mean, I, I don't know too many schools that are meeting that number.
We met on dropout rate, we just didn't meet on the graduation because of those 2 kids, and, you know, since there was only 17 that graduated, that took our percent down, but they're still here, you know, that type of thing, so. Is that all the questions you have?
Anything? All right, thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve the program evaluations. Scott? We move Judy Second. Okay, any discussion on the program evaluations? If not, we shall proceed to vote, all in favor of approval, raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed? Thank you, 7-0. Okay, I believe the next thing is the student attendance report.
Enrollment as of yesterday morning is 1276, it's down 2 from December, and some of these numbers might, I, I've updated the numbers, so if you've got numbers from last month, I've, I mean, I've updated them as well, so I think it, I think I had 3 less last month in that number, so I, what I do is I take the last day we're in school for the month, and put that one in there, so when I gave you December's numbers, I gave you pre, pre-number, whatever it was, whatever I did it through mid-December, so I update these every month, so we're, as of yesterday morning, we're at 1276 enrollment.
How does that compare to last year?
Last year, we were at 1288 on this date last year. It's on my notes over here. So 1288 last year, and in 2019, we were at 1319. So we've lost substantial number. Attendance rate, not too bad, 94.21, our overall for the year so far is 94.59, it is exactly the same as it was last year.
Okay.
That number, I, that's, I read it twice just to make sure, but it's, our, our attendance rate last year at this time was 90, overall was 94.59%, exactly, so. So we're not doing too badly there. Enrollment, the enrollment drop won't affect us financially next year much, the year after it will, but next year it won't affect us as much financially. The other thing that we have going for us financially when we look at enrollment is our summer school enrollment was only 32 from last summer, that's usually half of what it is, so I'm, I'm, I'm expecting us to be, be around that 60 mark again for summer school enrollment, which will be a nice boost, so that, instead of dropping off, that'll help us level out, so that, that, I'm, I'm counting on us having around 60, that would be great. If we look at our cash flow for December, final balance as of December for Fund 1 was 1.57, Teacher Fund, that, that's kind of misleading, but it was 364, Debt Service Fund, that's way up there, that's why we're, that's why we refinanced, and that will, we'll have a huge payment next year, but that's okay, we'll be ready for it, it's already right there. And all funds, about 2.5 million, almost 2.6 million dollars in all funds right now, so we are, as of right now, we're sitting quite well. State, our revenue for the month was 1.5 million, expenditures 1 million, so we, a little bit, about 556,000, so we are still 356,000 ahead, we will have another, for January, that was local taxes there, for that revenue, we'll have another nice local tax, and hopefully that will get us set up to where we, we're good to go for the rest of the year, and we don't, hopefully don't deficit spend. Right now, I can tell you, projecting our deficit spending, remember, we looked at the budget you approved was like 390,000 dollar deficit spending, but right now, it's looking, we've got it down to about 190,000 dollar deficit spending, so the year's been going, progressing better than we think, and on top of that, we should get another CARES Act money that we don't know what's, we don't know what it's going to be, but CARES Act 2 should come out in the next few weeks, another bailout for schools, which will help us significantly, hopefully get us to, hopefully it's enough money where we don't have, we don't deficit spend this year, that would be amazing. So financially, you know, things we've done to prepare for this have put us in a pretty decent situation. Year-to-date revenue expense comparison, last year's expenditures were 5.4 million, this year it's 5.3, so we've got about 163,000 in savings. Revenue last year was 5.7, this year it's 5.6, so we're down about 90,000, but, and, and again, that's not, that's not near as bad as I thought it was going to be, that's why it's getting better, because we, just simply because, you know, food service is doing great for us, the CARES Act money helped that out as well. Before all this happened, it was, you know, last year, we projected about $1,000 that we would have been able to put back in our reserve funds, or $1,000, $100,000, we were projected about $100,000, then everything hit, and money dried up and everything, and then we ended up, actually with the CARES Act money, we ended up putting, what was it, $322,000 in, so there was about, we were, we were already ahead of the game and in pretty good shape, CARES Act money helped us a lot, and set us up for this year to where we can, we can weather the storm this year, and remember, we got almost $300,000 withheld in July, so it's balancing out right now, we would have been, if, unless would have hit, we would have been, we would have about $100,000 ahead and been here, so right now, with the way we prepared and everything financially, the way we prepared, had us breaking even, and now, it, it, we're not as bad as it could have been, there's other school districts that are really, really going to have to dig into their reserves, we're not going to have to dig in as deep, hopefully, when, if we get a second round of CARES money, we won't have to dig into reserves at all, we'll be able to put more money into reserves. we won't have to dig into reserves at all. We'll be able to put more money into reserves. So we're, financially, we're doing well. Year-to-date labor cost last year for teachers, 2.6. Right now it's 2.598. So we're saving to this day about $18,000 in that money. General fund, which is classified folks, 1.1 million 29,000. So we're at 1,400,000. So about $24,000 in savings. So right now about $43,000 in savings from labor costs last year at this point. And, which is surprising in the, in the general fund because we gave raises. It should be going up, but it's actually going down because of turnover and different things like that. So that's why that one's down. And it's not hard. And the reason the teacher fund is down is because we didn't fill the, the position in council. That's why it's down. So. Other cost centers, transportation fuel, I have no idea what's going on. I'm guessing it's because we're taking a lot fewer trips. But our year-to-date money, transportation fuel is just 19,000. Last year at this time was 32,000. Labor, transportation labor is actually down 3,000. Transportation supplies is down 33,000, which I was really excited about until Rusty walked in my office today. So kiss that goodbye if we have to buy a new bus. Because we're, they're not gonna give us enough to replace that bus because it was the oldest bus in our, our rotation. So.
We haven't heard yet if they're gonna.
If they totaled that bus and we have to buy another new bus, that $33,000 in savings is gone. But it was there for a little while. So.
At least we have to.
Yeah, it's there. It's, it's actually there to help us. So.
We will get something from that bus though, correct?
If they total, yeah.
If they total, we will get something.
Yeah, something.
Well, I mean, they don't know what it'll be. So we'll get, we'll, last year when we had, or was it last year, two years ago?
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago when we, we totaled the bus because of the flooding, we had 15,000, I think.
16,000, $1,000.
That was a lot newer bus though.
Yeah.
This one's not.
I know.
Yeah, we'll see. So we'll, we'll be all right. We've got the money in there to be all right. So, I mean, budgeted-wise, we're there. Other financial dashboards, we got utilities. Last year-to-date, I don't know why I have those backwards like that. Last year-to-date, electric was 115. This year it's 101. So we've got some nice savings going there. Trash and phone, last year-to-date was 31. This year it's 33. It's about, it's, it's not unexpected. So total last year, we paid a 146 up to this point and right now we're at 135. So we're projecting, we're going right along where we're supposed to be. Hopefully it stays true to that. COVID update, zero positives. At Triway, one student quarantine. This is as of yesterday morning. Zero positive students. At Granby, one positive staff, six students in quarantine. A high school has zero. We have other staff. So that gives us a total of one positive student, or one positive staff, I'm sorry, and seven in quarantine.
That's great.
Knock on some wood. Vaccine administration for school staff possibly in the next few weeks. Currently we're, I had, yesterday I was on a Zoom call with the Newton County Health Director, the Freeman representative, all the other schools in Newton County. So Seneca, Neosho, Westview and, and Diamond. So we were all on a Zoom call with four local pharmacies and talking about it. We'll have another one Tuesday morning, trying to roll out a plan, trying to coordinate everything together where our folks, when it, when they do release those to us, we're ready to go. So on a moment's notice. What we would like to do, Neosho, Neosho was thinking about closing school on Friday. Just calling off school, you know, if, if they can, and then just doing one mass thing. Have everybody go to the junior high gym and get their vacci, vaccination there. We could or could not do that. It all depends on, on when they can get the vaccinations available for us.
And all this is voluntary, right?
Yes, yes. All is voluntary. We sent out an email gauging, or I sent out an email gauging people's interest. We've got around, right around 50 folks of our 212, 200 that are interested at this point. So.
I read it and I'm not sure where I read it. So our, do our, will our staff have to go to, they will come to us?
Well, that, that, it all depends. Newton County Health might come to us. It all, it all depends on how everything works out here. I've talked to our three nurses and they're, they're on board to help with giving the, administering the shots for those folks. So if it does come to us, Newton County Health can get the, the vaccinations to us and we do it on a Friday afternoon. Would be the best time. That way if they have any adverse effects or anything like that, because sometimes when, you know, when you get a flu shot, it's the same thing. You get the shot, you might have a little bit of the symptoms and that gives you two days to recover before, or three days for us on a Friday. So it's still, logistics are still there. So right now, Newton County Health thinks they can get the Moderna vaccine, which is a shot now, and then you get the booster shot in nine months. And Freeman is going with the Pfizer one, which is you get the shot now and then three weeks later you gotta have another, you have to have the booster. So it's still, still a lot in play. We don't have any real definitive guidelines, but we are taking major steps forward for those who would.
You're meeting again next Tuesday.
Tuesday morning. Last number Tuesday morning at 8:30.
And that's all staff?
That's everybody. Everybody who's employed by the school, that substitutes who, I mean, we, we have, the substitutes who haven't actually subbed for us yet, we're not including them in there. But anybody who's subbed for us, anybody, substitute bus drivers, substitute custodians, if they've worked for us, they fall in there. And if they work for us at any time, they fall in there. So anybody and everybody that we can, that works with us or works for us, we're gonna give them.
Students.
If they would like it. Do I?
What about students?
Students are not in a high health risk group.
What's it cost?
As of right now, if they have Met insurance, it'll get paid for. So it, it'll be free. Met is agreed to that. And I'll just, I'll, I'll tell you the rest of it afterwards. So, because there's some things that don't necessarily want publicized just yet, but I'll, I'll explain it a little bit later for cost. Any questions?
Comments, thoughts?
Going along well.
Okay.
Light at the end of the tunnel.
How about operations?
We received our reimbursement from the Newton County CARES Act on the PPE and sanitation supply, the, for the second application. So we've got that checked. So that's good.
How much was it?
I'm sure it wasn't 78 cents?
It should have been 78 cents. We got a dime too much.
They gave, they paid us a dime too much.
Carpet, carpet at the GPA purchase for the Grand Good Bandroom was stalled over Christmas break and it looked very good. That's all I've got for you. How much? Any questions?
Do we have an update on whatever chemical we're using on the buses that is apparently bleaching?
It is a, I'm coming, vital oxide. And if it is not wet and then also cleaned off on our normal routine, it will not do that.
So it's operator error is what you're saying?
I'm just telling you what, I know.
We're not making any judgments here. What we have done is I've talked to Mr. Cole.
You just spray on and then you go through and wipe it off after it's dry?
No, you gotta spray it on. You gotta, you gotta let it, let it dry.
So basically they could have said not wet? They could have said on wet?
It's either, I don't, I don't know that. All I know is, those are the two things. It's either wet or it's been put on several applications. It's supposed to be cleaned. It's supposed to clean at least.
Oh, between.
Yes.
Wipe it down just in case like a drip forms and it doesn't drop down.
Wipe down though, and with a cleaner.
Well, I know they said even, even the coaches, even our coaches are not changing their clothes because it was bleaching the coaches as well. So wasn't just kids.
User error.
User error. That's the information I know.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you Rusty. Okay, I believe there's one left.
Maybe me? Rusty gets all the money and so I'm still waiting on my $96,300. As Newton County said, the check is in the mail, but I just haven't gotten it yet. And based on that, I think that's also gonna be able to pay for the rest of our virtual bill for this semester as well. So this should be a net of.
Zero.
Zero or a little bit. I've, I've also got kids coming out of virtual a little bit too.
Those numbers are?
I've got, right, first semester we had A2 students in virtual. That is now down to 68. 14 are coming back to seated and 13 have gone from where we had launch back into what we have at the high school ed mentum, which is Play-Doh and, and, and exchange classes for those.
What that is for us is that now we're not paying for launch. Now we're using our own program. So we're not farming it out to sprinkle. We're using our own program.
And that is a zero cost to us provided we are staying at, we usually reserve like 100 licenses. So if we can stay below that, we've already paid for that. If for some reason we had to go to 101, we would have to pay for that extra license. But as of right now, we're not having to pay for those. That's just what we, we've already paid for to use the program period.
And that's our yearly.
As opposed to launch, which costs us, you know.
Per student, per class.
Four grand per kid, per semester, for the high schooling line. So.
Is there any comments about the not using launch? I mean, has anybody said anything?
No, I, I'll be honest with you. The kids that were being successful in launch, I asked them and if they wanted to remain in it, I left them in it. Because I don't wanna, I, I didn't wanna mess with success. Those though, that, there were some that were successful that said, you know, I prefer to get out of it. So I put them in something else. And those that weren't successful, I just didn't give them the option. You're gonna do this. So if they still, I, I would rather have them in seated virtual or seated instruction if they weren't being successful. But if they still insisted, it's health reasons, I don't wanna be here. It's like, okay, we'll try this alternative now. But I just want you to know that I don't think this is the best thing for you and just go that way with it. So. For this year for, we've kinda got summer school. We've had preliminary talks about it. Dr. Mitchell said, you know, we're trying to have a relatively normal summer school this year as much as we can. We're looking at, and this isn't set in stone, but this is kinda what we're talking about. It'd be June 1st through the 25th, which is our 19 days of summer school. That's pretty much right after Memorial Day and then we would start summer school and it'd be Monday through Friday. Trying to look at something new. I've asked some of our high school teachers in, in fax, ag, in business and marketing if they might be interested in having a summer class for grades fifth through eight. Try to get them interested and then they can have like a week of something and then switch kids and then just, you know, kinda have activities with them. That might kinda, kinda grow their programs a little bit. They're all very interested in it, but I told them it's also gonna be contingent on, you know, your, your likelihood's gonna depend on fifth graders. So, you know, welcome to life. So we're, we're gonna try to see what the interest is for that. And then lastly, when we start to give MAP and EOC tests typically every year, they put questions on there that the kids have not covered at any point. They're field test items to look for next year. And they've told us that they're not gonna do that this year. So normally it's like you've got 50 questions, but then there's 60 on there or 10 questions of new stuff that they're just kinda wondering about. So they told us that they're not, that's not gonna be here and that should reduce our time rate by about 25%. And it is good, you know. So.
I have a question. Okay, I, because I've heard from some teachers of, of, they are not getting the Journeys, the reading program online this year.
Yeah.
So is that because of the cost for these, the launch? I mean, what was the reasoning behind that?
The, the reasoning is on that is because that was a program that was purchased in 2013 and that was good for five years, I think. And, no, I take that back. It was seven years. It was up this year. And I can get it again. And I'll be honest with you. I have the money for it, but it's $19,000 for one year. I asked the principals to kinda gauge it and I had about five teachers that wanted it. And I just don't know if that, spending that $19,000 is the best thing for my buck for that.
Probably that's probably what I've heard from them.
Yeah, I know.
The, the ones who want it.
Yeah, and I, I absolutely, and I probably can tell you who they are. And I, and I get that. And, and they do use it. But I don't, I don't wanna spend the $19,000 if I can't get everybody or almost everybody on board using it. So, yeah.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay. We are now down to new business and we're gonna talk about, and have a vote on the calendar. Any other discussion before we vote?
Unofficially, you don't have to vote on it, but I would still rather you do that.
Okay. All right, any motion for a calendar?
Draft one, right?
To approve.
To approve.
Okay, I move that we accept draft one?
No, draft three.
Oh, sorry, draft three.
End of three.
Draft one.
Draft one, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I think that we accept draft one for the 20, 21 school calendar?
No.
21, 22.
Where 20?
It's small.
You know what I mean, Tammy? You just heard it like it needs to be.
To me, it's employee's choice. I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Since we have had discussion on this before, all in favor of, you have discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Seven oh, going with draft one. Okay. And last but not least, we have some information on graduation.
Saturday, May 22nd at 10. Gonna try it outside again. When it went so well last time, let's try it again.
Well, I would say so well. There was a few, there was a flint now biter there. It was amazing. I loved it.
Let's hope there's no dew on the grass.
So the idea, and I don't know if they're gonna do the walk. They might do the walk again as well where they have the parade. They might do that again. That was, that went, that went over well. So I mean, let's, that's one of the things that we've talked to about with administrators. You know, we've had to make some major changes and some things for this year. What has gone well? What do we like that we might wanna keep using? And this might be one of those things. I haven't talked to Jeff about that, but he was mulling it over and.
Jeans would probably be high on that list.
Yeah, it will be.
Sorry.
Okay.
May 22nd at 10 a.m.
Anything else before we go into closed session? Seeing none, any motion to go into closed? Okay, Judy, a second?
I'm second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Seven oh, thanks for being here, guys.
Yeah, we love you guys. Get out.